Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the February Planning Commission for 2022 to order. First off, I want to say thank you for everybody's patience. We had some serious technical difficulties that we were able to work out. And before I ask for a roll call, I just want to read the Zoom instructions for anyone out there. Anyone wishing to call into Zoom, the call number is 1-669-900-9128. And the meeting ID is 871-7700-2351. Any participant wishing to speak via Zoom shall sign into Zoom with their first and last names and identify themselves with their first and last names when they're called upon. If you are a member of the public and you wish to speak, then please only click the raised hand prompt symbol during the public comment portion of the item you wish to speak to. You will only be called upon to speak during the public comment periods. Any panelists on Zoom should mute their mic until they're ready to speak. If anyone is having difficulty hearing the audio through Zoom, it may be useful to use earbuds. Thank you. So ladies, if we could get a roll call to establish a quorum, please?
I mean this one, I'm sorry. Roll call? Sorry. Larry Chesney.
President.
Sarah Silicheck. Here. Francine Doncic.
Here.
Michael Flick indicated that he would be absent. Kate Nelson.
Here.
Larry Payton.
Here.
Pat Phillips. Here. We have a quorum.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Commissioner Vilcek, if you could lead us to...
Yeah.
If you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Oh, yes. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Gustafson, if we could have the Ethics Law Announcement, please?
Commissioners are reminded that you could respect any matter or any person coming before the commission today. Number one, you received a gift or loan. Number two, you have a pecuniary interest. Number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship. Or number four, you've provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered here today. Please remember to disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, please abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, please disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gustafson. Secretary Lloyd, if we could have the appeal procedure, please?
Sure. Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or the Secretary of the Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. Next up on the agenda is public comment. And I want to remind you, but comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the agenda. However, action may not be taken on any matter raised during this public comment period until the matter is specifically listed on an agenda as an action item. Comments are to be made to the Planning Commission as a whole. Ladies, do we have any public comment via either Zoom or in chambers?
There is no public comment in chambers. And I have no hands raised via Zoom.
Thank you very much, ladies. Next on the agenda is the approval of the February 1st 2020 official agenda. If I could get a motion for that?
Mr. Chesney, move to approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
So, Commissioner, we have a first and a second for the approval of the agenda. Are there any adjustments that we are aware of? Hearing none. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the agenda is approved. Next item is item seven, approval of the January 4th 2020 draft minutes. And it says your commission members may identify any additions or corrections to the draft minutes as transcribed. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes from the January 4th meeting?
Commissioner Chesney moved to approve the minutes, January 4th meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Is there a second?
Second. Larry Payton, seconds.
Thank you, Larry. We have a first and a second to approve the minutes, draft minutes for the January 4th Planning Commission. And is there any corrections or questions at this point? Hearing none. All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is item eight, planning items. If you could read that for us. Secretary Lloyd, please?
Will do. This is a master plan update where the master plan update consultant team from Logan Simpson will brief the Planning Commission on the Envision Washoe 2040 project. The discussion will focus on the results of the project's first community engagement survey. And introducing the team is Senior Planner Eric Young.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Eric Young from Planning Division. I am really happy to be back here tonight. You'll remember I was here last month and gave you a review of some of our early work on the master plan update regarding the existing conditions document and the audit that we did. Tonight, we're very lucky to have our professional consultant team from Logan Simpson in town with us. They'll be in town for the rest of the week. They're going to give you another update tonight on how the survey has gone. Our very first survey is up on the web now. I hope all of you have taken it. If not, I hope you get on there and take it soon. They'll give you an update on the findings of the survey to date. And then they'll let you know a little bit about what we've got planned for the week ahead. We have a very full week planned of touring Washoe County. We won't make it all the way up to the high desert area. We had planned a full day to make it up to the high desert, but that is a full day. And so we've sacrificed that day to spend the entire week down here. They'll let you know a little bit more about that tour that we plan to make. Please, if you have ideas for us, places you'd like us to see, things you'd like us to make sure we include in the week while we're here, speak up. We'll do our best to fit it into the tour. But I'm pleased to introduce to you now Megan Moore and Melissa Ruth from Logan Simpson. And they have a nice update for you before we get started on our busy week. So, thank you.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. And I think Melissa and I have been waiting about a year to get out your way to see the area. So we've tried to do all our background, all our due diligence to date, but really, really excited to get out in the community. And with that, I've got a really pretty short presentation, as Eric mentioned, really to talk a little bit about what we're hearing so far from the online questionnaire. But I'll highlight just the overall process, what you can expect to see over the next six months or so, a little bit about the materials to date, and then talk you through kind of what we're expected to do this week. The process itself, right now, like I said, this is really our first chance to get out into the community and talk to folks. We've done a lot of Zoom meetings, a lot of calls and meetings with the steering committee, stakeholders, and our technical advisory and community advisory committees. But it's a good chance to get out into the community. So we'll be doing that this week. And then come March, we're really going to take a look at what these meetings have told us. Looking at the area plans, what are those issues and opportunities specific to each of those areas, as well as kind of backing out. And we've got a better level countywide of what those issues and opportunities are. And then looking into April and May, it's our chance to come back around to those areas and really talk with the community again. Did we get it right? Did we hear you correctly? Are these the kind of issues, opportunities that you'd like to see come out of this plan? And then in June through August, it's really kind of taking all that we've heard and starting to actually develop the plan document itself. So there'll be a number of meetings, probably more bubbles on there than what's shown to get through those different chapters and policy guidance, mapping, et cetera. This is just a reminder that this is really our repository for all information on the county plan. So it's envisionwashoe2040.org. The materials that I'll mention in the next slide are uploaded there. You can take a look at those anytime. What we've been doing, how to get involved, the online questionnaire is here. And really, I know you, as Commissioners, know this, but really for the public listening as well, this is where to go to get involved in this process and know what's going on. And the plan materials to date, again, these are posted on the website. And Eric had kind of mentioned these and had gone over some of this with you, I think, back in December. So the plan audit is really just taking a look at the existing document today, looking at redundancies within that plan, looking at the area plans themselves, and highlighting redundancies and commonalities between them. And then also taking a look at some of the best practices that are out there now that have kind of become more status quo in other areas in the time since this existing plan was done. The existing conditions document is also online, and that takes a good look at different elements that will carry through into the overall master plan, such as transportation, public safety, public facilities, natural resources, and highlights key stats, key findings for each of those areas. And then the overall vision, this is something that we're kind of looking for feedback this week as we get out there. But hand in hand with the steering committee over this past year and through those initial stakeholder interviews, we've developed kind of this draft vision for the county. And we're asking folks feedback on that now through the online questionnaire meetings. Now, in regard to the online questionnaire, it's been up about six or seven weeks, I think, since early December. I will say that we want more responses. We've gotten about 50 responses so far. We really want those numbers to get up. And you'll notice in here that there is one specific question on how people would like to plug into this process. Direct emails is one. So I'll go back and talk about that in a little bit. But right now, I think what we're hearing and who we're hearing from is good. So right now, who, do you live in Washoe County? That's who we want to hear from, right? So we've got a good percentage of folks there. And do you work in Washoe County? So yes, the majority of respondents live and work within the county or are retired. That's that purple. I know it's a little bit hard to see, but the red are the yeses. And then that purple line on do you work in Washoe County is the retired folks. Now, in regards to age, this is something that we track on a lot of plans because, as you'll notice, the brown bar, that's 65-plus. So those are your retirees that live in the county. But you'll notice that those bar charts really kind of fall off past that age bracket. And this is something that we'll try to, we will track, we will monitor throughout the process. But this tells us that we've got to work extra hard at getting students involved, the 18 to 24 age range, 25 to 34, 35 to 44, right? And so those are the folks that we're hoping to see this week. And we've got other venues to get those folks involved, specifically working with maybe the school districts and libraries on getting those ages involved throughout the process. So hopefully, when next time Eric gives an update or we're back here to give an update, you'll see these even out a little bit. And then this was the slide that I mentioned. So the best way to outreach, we asked this question early on just so we can be able to respond to the community a little better and know how they want to receive information. The top responses we're seeing here are direct emails. The next couple response, or the, I guess, the medium bars there are more on online questionnaires, which is up, and then, of course, the Washoe County website. So we've got two of those boxes covered. The direct emails, we're using the lists that we have. Just over the past couple weeks, we've gained more traction, I believe, with the community advisory boards and their distribution lists. So we're again hoping to see some numbers on this online questionnaire go up in the next couple weeks. I know that the cab members have also used social media like Nextdoor to reach out to their specific areas as well to gain interest. So that's something that we'll track as well. I was a little surprised to see social media not pop up as one of your big responders here. But we've got that as well, and we can continue to post things on social media. All right. Now to get into some of the questions and the feedback. So the first question, I hope at least you agree with some of the answers that you see on the screen here, but what changes have you noticed in Washoe County since you started living or working here? And I think you'll see a lot of these are in regards to probably just the growth that has happened in the area. You see the traffic congestion, increased population, loss of open space. Those all kind of speak to the rapid growth that you've seen. But then, looking at why you think master planning is important, the top three answers here are looking at thoughtful growth patterns, preservation of open lands, and then transportation improvements. So almost direct relation to what you just saw in that last slide. But what I did want to point out here is, you know, those thoughtful growth patterns and preservation of open space and transportation, they all go hand in hand, right? If we're really smart about where to put housing and jobs, close proximity to each other, that kind of gets into that smart growth, reduces your traffic impacts, et cetera, and helps preserve open space. So this is something that we'll keep track of as we go. We'll continue to monitor the responses, but I think you're starting to see some key themes come through even with the small amount of responses we've seen. And I will point out that back over the past year, we have had a number of steering committee and other committee meetings as well as stakeholder interviews. We're not seeing a whole lot of differences in the public response versus what we've heard from those, which is probably good. But we'll continue to monitor and see if we're hearing any kind of different feedback as well. In regards to what folks love about Washoe County, the light blue box there is access to outdoor recreation and the natural environment. The darker blue is the scenic landscapes. And then the orange is ample open space. So I think you're probably seeing a theme here. Everybody wants to get outdoors. They want to be able to recreate. And they want to be able to do that easily. They don't want to have to drive too far to be able to get on a trail or get out on a hike. What needs to be improved, I think you're going to see the flip side of this here, transportation. So traffic, infrastructure, multimodal options, that's the biggest improvement bar you see right there. And then infrastructure, as well as the red on the far left there. And in addition to that, is kind of a close third there, housing options. And I think we've heard that nationwide lately, but really being able to accommodate everybody in some type of home, right? And being able to at least provide that array and mix of housing that can do that. And then we asked folks to kind of fill in the blank for us as well. So in 2040, my vision for Washoe County is, and I know the words are a little bit, they're not quite right on here because of how the software kind of summarizes this. But what you're seeing here is a little bit more on sustainable growth, affordable housing, smart growth, equitable growth. You know, the word growth really comes up, so people are aware of what's happened, they're aware of the growth, and they want to rethink this a little bit. Some of the themes that you'll see on the side are, of course, affordable housing, equity, and diversity. We're seeing that come up as a theme. We were just talking about that with Eric a little bit earlier. Public safety, education, climate and resiliency, sustainability. I know these are all buzzwords, and we'll talk about that in a couple slides, too. But all of these things is what the community is looking for, at least these words to be in this plan and address some of these themes. And the vision that I mentioned that had been developed hand in hand with steering committee, we've put that out there for communities' response. And overall, what is that, about a 70% yes, we agree with this vision statement response rate? Yeah, some of the no's, we asked, okay, well, why don't you agree with it? Some of it's just wording, so I think there's some wordsmithing that we need to do in here. And maybe, maybe cut back on some of those words a little bit. I saw the "too complicated" in some of the comments. But also, a lot of communities are a little bit afraid to list resiliency or sustainability or climate envisioned, and we're seeing that not be the case here. I think folks are aware and willing to include that. So that'll be a discussion that I think we'll have this week and over the upcoming months. And getting into resiliency a little bit, very early on, this was determined to be kind of that key theme as we move through the process. Knowing that it is a buzzword, knowing that it can have some connotations in reference to it, we've been asking folks, what does it mean to them? And a lot of folks is just, you know, it's that ability to bounce back. It's the ability to continue towards a goal, even though you might have to change that goal or change the path you're on to get to that goal. It's the ability to react positively, I think that's up there. But also being resistant to economic downturns, kind of the technical resiliency in the natural environment, et cetera. So it's not, it's a word that means a little bit of everything, but generally, being able to accommodate, react, be proactive, just react for a positive future. So, again, just something to keep in mind as we move forward. Now, a little bit for next steps. These bullet points don't quite hit everything that we're trying to do this week. Eric has got a really good agenda for us. So tomorrow morning, we're trying to get generally to the northwest area and kind of north of the North Valleys, Verde, did I pronounce that right? Cold Springs. We're meeting with a couple developers in that area to kind of get an idea of what's happening, what's expected to see. We're stopping in Sun Valley for lunch and possibly meeting at the community and senior center there with folks. And then driving through Spanish Springs and Warm Springs and stopping at the regional shooting facility, which is going to be a new public event opportunity for myself. I've never done this in planning in 15 years, but to stop there and meet with folks. And then we'll be at the Spanish Springs cab meeting tomorrow evening to give them an update. And then Thursday, the tour continues out in Truckee Canyon and the community meeting down at Washoe Lake State Park. And then heading to Southwest Truckee Meadows and the night at Southwest Washoe Valley cab meeting Thursday evening. And then we will wrap up Friday morning with a technical advisory committee and a community advisory committee meeting here, just to give them kind of a recap of what we've heard from this week, give them a recap of the online questionnaire responses. And then we will prepare for our next update. And as I mentioned, the next update will probably include another initial interim summary for the online questionnaire. I think we'll expect that to continue through February. And another plug for getting word out about that, they can go to anybody you know, friends, family, colleagues, envisionwashoe2040.org. And then we will be taking in what we hear, probably drafting some opportunity and constraints maps for area plans, and probably start digging into some of the logistics and the layout and the structure of the master plan itself. With that, that's the end of the presentation, and we can take any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time?
Chair Doncic.
Yes, Chair Vilcek.
Thank you. So why is there not a link on the main Washoe County page to talk about? Because I just looked on my phone and there's nothing there to link to Envision.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that's a good question. I thought there was. I'm surprised to hear there's not, and there will be tomorrow.
Because I think you're missing a lot of people. I mean, I haven't taken...
We absolutely talked about that. I'm glad you brought it up. I thought it was there. It'll be there first thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Because...
Karen? Sorry.
The engaging process, and planning staff here knows that I was the chair of regional planning when we did the regional plan update. And the commission was deeply involved with the process of updating that regional plan from all the jurisdictions. And just when you went through, when you asked the question on the online survey, do you work in Washoe County? Because I, because we have jurisdictions, we have the greater Washoe County, we have City of Reno, we have City of Sparks. So that can be a little bit of a misleading question. I live in Washoe County, and we look at the greater Washoe County, but how you answer that question can be difficult for people because, no, I work in Reno, or I work in Sparks. So it's just the semantics of that. So it can be challenging for people to think about how they do engagements. So, and I'm grateful that you are going to community meetings that are scheduled. I would really like you, really like to have you start your day in the North California border at about 6:30 and try to drive into Reno going south. And then I want you to end your day tomorrow afternoon, trying to go back out to the North Valleys, leaving here at about 5 o'clock. And that same with Pyramid Highway and all of those. Those are our major congestion areas. And so I just, I guess, you know, for you, Eric, and for the rest of the planning staff, over engage, because this is the best kept secret so far, and it's just, it's really, really important. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners at this time? On Zoom?
Mr. Chesney.
Yes, Commissioner Chesney.
I would, I would like to support Sarah's suggestions. They're very, very important. I was also on, and still am on, the Regional Planning Commission when we rewrote the regional plan. Took us a long time, a lot of work. I don't envy your task ahead of you. But once you realize what's going on in the congested areas, and if you follow the different zones in the regional plan, from mixed used areas clear out to the rural areas, you will get a better understanding of what's really happening in the area right now and where development should be and where there has to be a line drawn between the very urban areas, the suburban areas, and the rural areas, and the, a clear vision of how development occurs. I hope I didn't confuse you too much, but those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Any other Commissioners at this time? All right. Trevor, I did have one question. I had an email, not Trevor, I apologize. I had an email pop up the other day about this, telling me to click on this link, and it asked me to sign in, to create a sign in for it. Is that a new part of the...
No.
Okay. Because I didn't, I'm not signing into anything. And I went to the county website, like Sarah, and I found that it is on the county. So was there some release or something?
No. Madam Chair, I'd like to know more about that, though, so that we can make sure it's not happening to other people. There's no, there are no sign ins. It's really just another website that you visit.
Well, it's a good thing I didn't click on it.
So I'd like to find out more about that. Maybe we could touch base tomorrow?
Okay.
Is that all right?
Either that, or I'll go home and see if I can find it and forward it to you.
That would be, that would be great.
Because I may have deleted it.
Is it, may I ask that in the email that you forwarded, may you, can you forward that to Lacy as well? She helps me with these issues. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you. So Commissioners, anything else at this time? Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That was excellent. And like I said, we all know from, we're all different age groups, but we all know that there's different ways that everybody's comfortable. Some of our neighbors hate computers, some of our neighbors hate texting, some of our neighbors hate social media. So it's, it's very hard. So we thank you very much for what you're doing because it's not easy trying to figure out how to reach out to everybody because they all have their different likes and dislikes. So thank you.
We'll take over engagement as our direction and go do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are on to item nine, which is a consent item. So Secretary Lloyd, if you could reach that and we'll decide whether we're going to just take it as a consent item or if someone wants to pull it to do some discussions.
Will do. Thank you. This is item 9A, Extension of Time Request for Tentative Subdivision Map, case number TM04001-Sun Mesa. For hearing discussion and possible action to approve an extension of time for the approval of the subdivision for two years from April 28, 2022 until... of the subdivision for two years from April 28, 2022 until April 28, 2024. The subdivision was originally approved by the Planning Commission on April 20, 2004 for 257 single-family lots. Planning Commission may grant an extension of not more than two years for the presentation of any final maps after the two-year period for presenting a successive final map has expired in accordance with NRS 278-360. Again, this is a consent item, but if there are questions, Senior Planner Roger Pelham is in the audience and available to answer those questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Chesney?
Yes, Commissioner Chesney.
It was approved in 2004. I guess I would ask Roger, with the amount of development that is going on and the need for housing, what's the holdup?
Good evening. For the record, Roger Pelham with Washoe County Planning. There have actually been several final maps already recorded. The next final map is actually in for review right now, but they wanted to get this extended for an additional two years, just in case there's any delay in getting this next final map recorded. But I did the technical review on it, I want to say last week or the week before.
That answers my question. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners at this time?
Thank you.
As this is a consent item, I'm going to go request for a motion.
Commissioner Chesney?
Hold on. Since we opened it up from a consent item to, we have to ask if there's any public comment requests.
Okay.
There is no public comment in chambers.
And I have no hands raised if you assume.
Thank you, ladies. Seeing that there's no public comment, we'll bring it back to the commission. Any other questions at this time? Hearing no questions, I'll adjoint a motion for approval.
Commissioner Chesney? I move that the Washoe County Planning Commission approve the two-year extension of time request until October 16, 2023 for tentative subdivision map, case number TM 5-2-92 for the St. James Village subdivision, subject to the attached conditions of approval as previously amended, having made the findings that the conditions of approval ensure consideration of the items enumerated in NRS 278.360, that the original findings remain valid and that the circumstances have not appreciably changed since the original approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Do we have a second on this motion?
Commissioner Doncic. Commissioner Payton would like to second.
Isn't that the incorrect project?
Commissioner Chesney said St. James, and this is actually Sun Mesa that's before you. And the request is to extend until April 28, 2024.
But St. James is in the motion.
Is it?
Yes, it's part of the subdivision name.
Okay, so that's the same?
Yes.
Just wanted to-
No, it's not. So this is wrong.
No, that's, I apologize again for the record, Roger Pelham. That's my fault. I'm sorry. That clearly slipped through from the previous one. This is Sun Mesa, that is not St. James. So if we can-
And the dates are wrong.
-go ahead and reference the date and name as read into the record by Trevor at the beginning of this, I would be appreciative.
I can pull up. I think for-
Commissioner Chesney, I'll amend my motion to-
If you could, Ms. Gustafson requested you make a fresh motion, please.
Commissioner Chesney? This is recording secretary. I can pull it up on the screen if you need.
Please, go ahead.
Yep. Working on it. And we should have a formal withdrawal of the motion.
Okay. So Commissioner Chesney, do you wish to withdraw the original motion?
Commissioner Chesney chooses to withdraw the original motion?
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney.
And we have a new motion, I see. Is this the correct motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I move that the Washoe County Planning Commission approve the two-year extension of time request until April 28, 2024 for tentative subdivision map, case number TM 04-001 for Sun Mesa, subject to the attached conditions of approval as previously amended, having made the findings that the conditions of approval ensure consideration of the items enumerated in NRS 278-360, that the original findings remain valid and the circumstances have not appreciably changed since the original approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second to this corrected motion?
Chair Doncic, Commissioner Payton, I would like to second.
Thank you.
Do you amend the motion?
Commissioner Payton, second. Any further questions at this time? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, ladies. Moving on, the next item, we're opening for public hearing. Before I go forward with this, I just want to remind, ask commissioners, do they have any disclosures, whether they be ethics or ex parte communications?
Chair Doncic.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, Commissioner?
Chair Don. I must make a disclosure on this item. I am the engineering manager for the Incline Village General Improvement District. And in that position, I frequently see easements and abandonments and information on projects like this. And I believe that I could fairly and impartially consider this matter. However, from an objective standpoint, with my position at IFGID, I believe that it could be reasonably construed that I have prejudged this matter. Thus, I must conclude that in the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation could be questioned. And in accordance with the Planning Commission's rules, I've decided that I need to abstain from consideration in voting on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson, for that. We'll take you up on that. Thank you.
Okay, so let the record reflect that Ms. Nelson has been removed from the Zoom at this point. And then, of course, when this item is over, she will be-
We'll make sure she comes and gets back on.
Yeah, invited back into the Zoom meeting.
Legal counsel, recording secretary Kerfoot. I'm sorry, this is new to me. Do I need to remove her completely or can I make her an attendee where she's not discussing?
I would remove her-
Completely?
-from Zoom. And then we'll give her a call when we're over and she can come back in.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Ms. Gustafson. Secretary Lloyd, if you could read for us, please.
This item before you, item 10A, abandonment case number WAV 190002 for Romance Avenue. For hearing discussion and possible action to approve the abandonment of Washoe County's interest in 20 feet of width or 2,950 square feet of the southern portion of a 50-foot wide unimproved right-of-way at the terminus of Romance Avenue between Lake Tahoe and Lake Shore Drive. If approved, the area will be abandoned to the abutting property to the south of the abandonment site, which is owned by Richard and Lilian Dixon at 1713 Lake Shore Drive. The request to abandon this right-of-way is made pursuant to NRS 278-480 and related provisions in the Washoe County Development Code. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Planner Julie Olander.
Julie Olander with Planning and Building. So this is an abandonment, a quest for abandonment of 20 feet off of Romance Avenue to the adjacent property owners to the south. And here's an overall view of where it's at. You can see the applicant is located to the south where the abandonment area is located. Just to give you a little bit of background, this subdivision is in the Rocky Point subdivision. There are several roadways through the Rocky Point subdivision that were never constructed and other portions of the roadways in the subdivision have been abandoned to adjacent property owners. So I just want to show you where, there's three of them. There's one that is to the north, that's also along the lake, and then one to the south, which is again on the lake. And then there's one sort of in the middle where two properties were located and they abandoned that portion for Romance Avenue. So just to remind, tell you what these abandonments were, in 1996, it was 2,000 square feet to the property owner at 1705 Lake Shore. And then the abandonment, 2008, of 185 linear feet along Mark Twain to 1717 Lake Shore Boulevard. And then an abandonment in 2012 of Romance Avenue to the property owners at 1710 Lake Shore Avenue, or Boulevard, excuse me. This abandonment was present, did come in in 2018, basically, and I mean, 2019, to address a building permit that was erroneously approved in 2018 for the construction of a deck and stairs. The deck and stairs were built in the public right-of-way. And so the applicant is asking for an abandonment to accommodate those stairs and then also to accommodate the setbacks. So to see in this map, what the yellow, the lower portion of the yellow, is where the property owner's property is currently, the pink is the 20 feet. And then there is, I just wanted to highlight also, there are some structures that are built along the lakefront that were not built with a permit. And then the Incline Village GID, General Improvement District, has a lift station on it. Thank you for pointing out those items. So those are the, the structures are on the two properties. I also want to point out that this application was submitted in 2019. However, it was pulled back for a variety of different reasons. And one of them was there was some different, staff wanted to look at some different possibilities of moving forward this application besides abandoning it. So we looked at selling the right-of-way to the applicant. However, it was pointed out that NRS 24.276 sort of limits that. So if there's property that, right-of-way that's been dedicated to the county, not built on totally, but dedicated to the county, NRS requires that we abandon it to the abutting property owners. So we looked at abandoning property to the property owner to the north, which is Nevada Department of State Lands. However, they were not interested in any portion of the property being abandoned to them. There is that lift station in the property on the right-of-way and they felt that that was, could be problematic. We looked at creating a park there so that people could use the right-of-way. However, it's along State Route 28, there's very, there's no parking there. It's quite, it's a sloped property. So again, that was not seen as an option. And then we also looked at transferring the right-of-way to the GID because the GID is a public agency. We wouldn't abandon it to them. We would transfer the right-of-way to them. However, the GID is concerned about the structures that have been built along the waterfront. So at this point, there were no other options. Nobody other was interested in the property besides the Dixons to the south. So we are now moving forward with this application that was submitted in 2019 after going through this variety of different rendations of how to add into the right-of-way. Here's some photos of it. You can see the Dixon's property where the stairs and the deck is. And then to the right is, you can see just a portion, I apologize, I thought I had some better pictures of the structures that are built down along the lakefront that are permitted. But you can see that the slope is pretty steep there at the lake. And then, I thought I had a picture of the GID. Oh, well. Anyway, so that, that's a pretty sloped area in general. The application was sent out to different agencies for review. There were no comments of recommendations of denial. The abutting property owners were noticed. It was noticed in the Reno Gazette Journal on January 18. And NRS does give the Planning Commission the ability to abandon easements. Staff has concluded that the adjacent property owners will not be negatively affected and that the surrounding properties will have continued access to their own properties. So the abandonment will not impact them. And staff is able to make the three findings. I do want to point out, there were numerous emails that I know you received asking to sell the property. I hope I explained that that is not possible because of NRS. There's also concern that this would limit the access to the lakefront for these people in this neighborhood. The property's not posted, no trespassing. So the county at this time is not prohibiting people to access the lake from this location. However, it is being looked at again because it's not a very easily accessible point to the lake. But concluding, I have provided you a motion to accept the abandonment and it's here posted on the PowerPoint. And I'm available for any questions. Also, the applicant's representative is online and has a presentation.
Madam Chair, if I could, just one clarification on an item that Ms. Olander raised. None of the Washoe County agencies recommended denial. There was one state agency, however, that did not support this request. That was an abutting property owner, the State Division of Lands owns a property abutting this right-of-way.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. Is there any questions for staff at this time or would we just want to go to the applicant presentation and then come back? Do questions, commissioners? Go to the applicant? All right, thank you. If we can bring the applicant up, please.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Ms. Hoyta, you have the floor. And if you'd like, since you are on Zoom, you can share your screen to click through the presentation. Or if you'd like me to pull it up, I can do that as well.
Sure. Let's see, I have it here. Let me see. I will try to share it with you.
Perfect, we can see it.
My name is Corinne Hoyta of Basin Strategies Planning and Consulting. I'm here on behalf of Richard and Lilian Dixon regarding their abandonment application of a portion of the unimproved Romance Avenue right-of-way. I plan to share a presentation of the proposed project and at the end, I will address the comments and questions that have been received in association with this application. I'd like to request that you please hold any additional questions until the end of Here's a parcel map of the Rocky Point subdivision, which was created in the early 1900s. The applicants are requesting abandonment of a 20-foot-wide section of the right-of-way associated with Romance Avenue. An approximate 30-foot-wide section of the right-of-way is proposed to remain. And there is also an approximately 50-foot-wide section of shoreline owned by the state that is immediately north of this right-of-way. As you can see, there have been what I count as four prior 25-foot-wide abandonments approved in this subdivision, two of which were located on Romance Avenue and two of which were lakefront. This property, this proposed abandonment is the last possible shoreline abandonment application within this subdivision. This photo shows the shoreline of the project area. In the background, you can see the applicant's residence, including an elevated deck and stairway that currently encroach onto the county right-of-way. This approximately 100-square-foot encroachment has existed since the home was originally constructed in the 1930s. The home has since been rebuilt and the location of the deck and stairs have been permitted by Washoe County to remain in their original location. In the middle of the picture, you can see a portion of the approximately 400 square feet of unpermitted existing deck and accessory structures. These structures are located on the 30-foot-wide section of right-of-way that is to remain. These structures are not associated with the applicant's property. They were constructed and are used by a few residents with homes located east of Highway 28 in this subdivision. In the foreground, you can see the shoreline of the adjacent property owned by the state of Nevada. The shoreline access of this parcel is hindered by steep terrain, large boulders, and heavy brush, and is not anticipated to be impacted by this project. This aerial exhibit shows the applicant's parcel to the south, the right-of-way in the middle, and the state-owned parcel to the north at the top of the photo. The abandonment would bring the applicant's permitted deck and stairs into conformance with current setback regulations. The unassociated, unpermitted deck structure would remain on the 30-foot-wide section of right-of-way, along with a sewer lift station that is owned and maintained by Incline Village General Improvement District, or IFGID. The footpath access to the remaining right-of-way from the highway would also remain unaffected by this proposal. One of- One of several alternatives to this abandonment project that was considered by Washoe County over the past three years was to transfer ownership of this right-of-way to the state, since they own the adjoining parcel to the north. The state declined this offer due to the presence of the sewer lift station. This photo shows the view of the right-of-way from Highway 28 looking west toward the lake. The footpath access that can be seen in the photo is not impacted by this abandonment. As I mentioned, the state declined the county's offer to acquire any portion of this right-of-way, quote, "as it would come with maintenance that we have no way to support," end quote. IFGID also declined the county's offer to acquire the right-of-way. Another alternative considered by Washoe County was to create a park in this area. This was determined not to be feasible due to the steep slope, lack of area for parking, and the presence of the sewer lift station. Since the existing footpath access to the right-of-way will remain within the right-of-way, and since the adjacent state-owned parcel has significant vegetation growth and large boulders, this abandonment is not likely to affect the state's parcel, nor any existing or prior use of this right-of-way. The proposed 20-foot wide abandonment will have no significant impact on public access to the shoreline of Lake Tahoe, because the portion of this right-of-way that is accessible shoreline will remain within the right-of-way. The portion of the shoreline to be abandoned is only accessible via the applicant's stairs because the boulders are so large in this area. The majority of the right-of-way will remain, including the area that has historically only been used by a few residents with homes in this subdivision on the east side of Highway 28. As you can see, there is nearby unimproved shoreline known as Hidden Beach that is more widely used by the public. The Tahoe East Shore Trail also provides improved, improved public beach access nearby. Planning Commission members, we would like to request your support of this project for the following reasons. First, the applicable sections of Washoe County code have been sufficiently addressed by Washoe County staff. Alternative options have been thoroughly explored by Washoe County staff over the past three years, and this 20-foot wide abandonment was determined to be the best solution. Completion of this abandonment will bring the existing permitted improvements associated with the applicant's property into conformance with current setback regulations. The proposed area of abandonment is currently the applicant's only lake access via stairs from their elevated deck, due to large boulder terrain along this section of shoreline. And finally, four similar 25-foot wide abandonments have been approved in the immediate vicinity, and this is the last possible abandonment in this, along the shoreline in this subdivision. Now I'd like to address three questions that were raised in public comments received in association with this project. Question one, why does this project not include upfront fair market value compensation for this public land? The applicants have been willing to pay fair market value since it was suggested originally in 2019, when this project was first considered. Washoe County was unable to obtain appraisal of the right-of-way due to the sewer lift station that is located in the right-of-way. Additionally, as I just learned from Ms. Olander's presentation, the county determined it cannot sell any portion of right-of-way due to NRS Section 244.276 (2). There is no significant increase in property value or development potential associated with this abandonment. The 20-foot wide section of right-of-way is burdened by steep terrain, large boulders, existing utilities, and is essentially unbuildable. The right-of-way was offered to State Lands and to IFGID, and both declined. The property taxes associated with this abandonment are expected to increase significantly and in perpetuity, which will be a benefit to Washoe County, whereas currently there are no property taxes collected on this land. After much consideration, Washoe County staff determined partial abandonment to be the best solution, and directed the applicants to resubmit the 2019 abandonment application for the 20-foot wide section of right-of-way, which they did. Question two, would approval of this abandonment set precedence and encourage property owners to erect unpermitted structures on adjacent county land and then request abandonment of said land? No, it would not. The 100-square-foot deck and stair encroachment was built in the 1930s, presumably before any application process was in place, and has since been rebuilt with required permits through Washoe County. The applicants did not act in malice. Also, please understand, the applicants do not own, use, or maintain the 400 square feet of unpermitted deck and accessory structures located on the remaining right-of-way. Does approval of this abandonment affect or restrict current public access to the shoreline of Lake Tahoe? There will be no significant reduction of public access to this 20-foot wide area of shoreline, since the public does not use this area due to existing steep terrain, large boulders, lack of parking, and dangerous access along Highway 28. The 30-foot wide section of right-of-way to remain is mainly used by a few nearby residents with homes across the highway, and this area is to remain unaffected by the proposed abandonment. Hidden Beach is the more widely-used, unimproved public shoreline access in the immediate vicinity, and the Tahoe East Shore Trail provides safe and improved public access to three miles of shoreline nearby. Thank you for your consideration of this project, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Fellow commissioners, do you have any questions at this time of either staff or the applicant? Okay, at this point, we'll open it up. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment in chambers.
I do have a hand raised via Zoom. Kathy Julian, I'm going to allow you to speak, if you could please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Sure, my name is Kathy Julian. I'm a full-time resident of Incline Village, and I do appreciate the opportunity to speak here. I had a few of those questions that were addressed by the consultant, and, but her, her presentation raises a couple other questions for me. She, she, or the consultants had access to the comments from the community and our queries of this project. And I'm wondering, did community members have access to the consultant's presentation on this project in advance of this meeting? That would be a question for the planning commission and for the county, because it would seem to me, in the interest of good governance, that there be full transparency so that we can see the full story behind a request for an abandonment. My concerns remain that this appears to be the county providing vacating property that belongs to the county, belongs to the public, and not securing adequate compensation for that. This property, according to the information on the website, increases the parcel owner's area by 50%. That undoubtedly will have an impact on the value of their property. We know from the 2019 application that the applicant did see that this property they would be given has value, and that's why they offered to make several improvements, and in, improve the erosion, mitigate erosion aspects of it, and improve pathways, and do a number of things, which, which, when I attended the CAP meeting back in 2019, I thought was laudable. But I'm, it's sad that this is not in this proposal that we're, that you're looking at today, that these concessions, these offerings of the, of the applicant were, were ignored or not taken up on. What this entire process points to, and I think it's of greater concern, we have this code in the Washoe County that you can't abandon properties. But the problem is, in the context of Lake Tahoe, we are looking at here an abandonment of a lakefront property and public access, although it may not be that great a public access. In the context of Lake Tahoe, I would urge the planning commission and the county to reevaluate how it looks at abandonments in the Tahoe Basin. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Julian.
Thank you, and Ms. Julian, I was asked to let you know that all presentations are put up on our website within 24 hours prior to a meeting. So if there's something out there, no?
I apologize, this is recording Secretary Lacy Kerfoot. Our general procedure is that staff reports are available prior to the meeting, and all meeting presentations, including PowerPoints provided to the commission, will be posted to the website within 24 hours following the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Is there any other public comment this time?
I do have another hand raised via Zoom, Greg Pryor. I'm going to allow you to speak, if you could unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Yes, my name is Greg Pryor. I'm a resident at 1712 Lake Shore. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Great, thank you. This statement is regards to the abandonment that said-stated WA 19002, 0002 of Romance Avenue. Our family at 1712 Lake Shore Drive, or more recent homeowners in the Rocky Point community, comparative with our neighbors' historical residents. Our lake access, along with our neighbors', has always been through Romance Avenue. We would support the approval of this abandonment request, provided the county of Washoe keeps the additional 30 feet of Romance Avenue in unimproved right-of-way, an unimproved right-of-way for the public's ongoing use. Our family, as well as our neighbors at 1708 and 1710 Lake Shore Drive, would be using the remaining right-of-way access as they historically have. As you know, IFGID also maintains a sewage pumping station within this 30-foot remaining right-of-way. IFGID employees and inspectors use Romance Avenue access often for facility inspection and maintenance. Nevada Energy and AT&amp;T have existing structures, infrastructural aspects running through the Romance Avenue easement. As has been pointed out, when Twain Avenue and Reno Avenue were abandoned, Washoe County required a public access easement to be maintained from the low water line to elevation of 6250 feet. This allowed continued public access to the shore zone. It would appear to be consistent and fair, all 50 linear feet of Romance Avenue remain in an easement for lake access for public use. The natural beauty and splendor of Lake Tahoe and its public access to the shore zone are and will continue to be of utmost concern. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment at this time?
I have Matt Callahan. If you could please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Matt Callahan?
You have the floor.
Our family's owned property at 1710 Lake Shore since 1959, and our access to the lake has always been through Romance Avenue. We support approval of this abandonment request, provided that the county keeps the additional 30 feet of Romance Avenue, an unimproved right-of-way for the public's continued use. Not only would our family be using the remaining right-of-way, but the residents of 1708, Greg, and 1712 Lake Shore Drive have always used this access, would as well. IFGID also maintains a sewer pumping station within the remaining 30 feet right-of-way, as was included in the presentation. Its inspectors often use Romance Avenue to obtain access to the station. Both Nevada Energy and AT&amp;T have lines running through this easement. When Twain Avenue, which was also an unimproved right-of-way to the immediate south of Romance Avenue, was abandoned in 2009, the county required a public access easement from the low water line to elevation 6250, thus allowing public access to the shore zone. Similarly, when Reno Avenue and other unimproved right-of-way to the immediate north of Romance Avenue was abandoned, the same restriction required an easement, allowing public access along the shoreline was required. Consistency requires that the shore zone area of all 50 linear feet of Romance Avenue remain an easement for the public's use and access to the lake. Public access to the lake is such an important issue, and to our knowledge, no examples exist of the county giving away the public's access to the shore zone of the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lacy, anymore?
I have no further hands raised via Zoom, but if I may, Madam Secretary, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
That's okay.
From the secretary. I would just like it noted that we did receive eight public comment emails, Corinne Hoyta, Brent Bismar, Doug Flaherty, Kathy Julian, Pamela Sigdenos, Erin Connell, Roxanna Dunn, and Diane Becker, as well as the minutes from the Incline Village Crystal Bay CAP meeting from November 4, 2019. All of those were shared with the commissioners and posted to the website prior to the meeting to be included in the record.
Thank you, Lacy. Hearing no more public comment, I will close public comment at this time, and bring it back to the commissioners for any questions of, of the staff or applicant at this time.
So I have a question for the applicant.
Okay, okay, thank you. I didn't know who it was, thank you.
Commissioner Payton here. So, from what I understand, in talking with IFGID, you know, a lot of people cross the street, and the terrain is not that great, and these owners just want to be in compliance for the deck, correct? Was there any thought in giving them an area around their deck to where they can conform with the county, and not taking the entire 20 feet off Lake Shore, going all the way back to the property?
To the best of my knowledge, that has never been a consideration. They originally applied, consistent with the previous four abandonments in the subdivision, they applied for the 25 feet, which is half of the right-of-way closest to their property, and they were directed by county staff to reduce that request to 20 feet, which they did.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Payton. Any other questions for staff or applicant at this time? Hearing none, I will bring it back to commissioners to join for a motion.
To the chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chesney? I would like to point out, under, on page eight of our staff report, under staff comments required on, required findings, under B, under no detriment, and I want to read this for, for the public and also for the commission, that Romance Avenue is a public right-of-way, however, was never built and is not needed to provide access to any residents. The proposed abandonment will not result in a loss of access to the lake via the public right-of-way, since 30 feet of the public right-of-way will remain. The abandonment will allow the applicant's deck and stairs to be located in their property, and will allow the side yard setbacks to be met for the parcel. Romance Avenue is a public right-of-way, and there are no signs posted that prevent the public from accessing the lake view, lake via this public right-of-way. So that answers a lot of the public comment. I would be more than glad to make a motion.
Please do.
Okay. I move that after giving reason consideration to the information contained in the staff report, and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve abandonment case number WAB 19-0002 for Richard and Lillian Dixon, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Section 110 806.20.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Payton will second.
Thank you, Commissioner Payton, for your second. Is there any further questions or discussion at this time? Hearing none, I'm over the vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, moving along on the agenda, we are up to Item 11, Chair and Commission Items.
To see if Commissioner Nelson would like to-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rejoin the meeting?
Thank you, Ms. Gustafson.
Of course. Is Commissioner Nelson not rejoined yet? I have not seen her pop up. And the record, if you'd like to contact her, is that she's not rejoined? Yes, okay. Then, okay, then it's up to the chair whether we give her some more time or if you'd like to continue.
Give her a couple, we'll give her a few more minutes just to see, she might be having connection problems.
Yeah. If she does come back in, Lacy, please just let us know for the record. I will. Oh, she's calling, okay. I emailed her a link as well to get back in.
So she, uh?
The host removed her from the meeting, and she's unable to come back in?
We're trying to figure it out right now.
I did check the Zoom settings, and it does show that it should allow her to rejoin. I apologize, I have not removed someone from a meeting before, so I am not well-equipped in how to handle this.
Do you just want to stay on, and if you have any questions?
She can call in.
Or you can call in.
Here.
Why don't you do that?
Um.
Okay. All right, do you have the number?
Okay.
It should be on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, it's the 1-6-6-9-912. And then, so look at the top of the agenda, there's also an ID. That's it. All right. Okay.
Okay, let the record show, we have 775-298-9095. Kate, if you're able to unmute and just confirm that you are part of the meeting again.
I am online, or at least I can hear you.
Excellent, we can hear you. 7:23, Commissioner Nelson has rejoined the meeting.
Welcome back, Commissioner Nelson. At this point, we're just going on to Item 11, which is Chair and Commission Items, which are non-action items. First one is 11A. Commissioners, any ideas for future agenda items at this time? Okay, hearing none at this time. Any Item 11B, requests for information from staff? Okay, hearing none at this time. I will move on to Item 12, Directors and Legal Counsel Items. Secretary Lloyd, Item 12A, report on previous Planning Commission Items.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Item 12B, Legal Information Updates. Ms. Gustafson, anything from your perspective?
Thank you, nothing to update you on today.
Thank you very much. Okay, then moving on, we have one more public comment. Ladies, do we have any public comment, whether it be in chambers, Zoom, via phone?
No public comment in chambers. I do have a hand raised via Zoom. Ms. Julian, I'm going to allow you to speak if you can unmute, please, and state your first and last name.
Sure, my name is Kathy Julian, and this is more a query than a comment. I went to the website, and I do see that, the website of Washoe County Planning Commission, I do see that at 4:00 p.m. today, comments were uploaded to the website. My query for county staff and the Planning Commission is the comments from the paid consultants for the applicant for Romance Avenue were submitted in the morning, around 8 o'clock in the morning, 8:30 in the morning today. Were they given advanced copies of the letters from the community that, or emails from the community, that were sent out to the government? Or how does this work? Now, I recognize you can't answer this question in the form that we're in now, but I would ask that Ms. Olander revert to me in an email and explain exactly how this process works because I see some inequity and a lack of transparency if the consultants for the applicants are provided the materials that they need to respond to in advance, whereas the public does not get the applicant's full presentation until 24 hours, within 24 hours after the presentation. We should have a level playing field here, and we should have transparency, and frankly, I think in the context of Lake Tahoe and in the context of abandonments in general, we should have greater involvement of a broader cross-section of the community, and it is not simply the neighbors who live around this property, it is the entire Incline Village community that should be made aware of abandonments of lakefront property in their community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time?
I have no further hands raised via Zoom.
At this point in time, I will close public comment. And Item 14, and it is a joint motion for adjournment.
Commissioner Chesney, motion to adjourn.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Take care.
Thank you all. I love you very much.